Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this January 11th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting to order. If you would join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, please remain standing. I would like to have a moment of silence in condolences for the loss of Mrs. Helen Pelletier. She was a longtime 1978 to 2010 employee in the district in the cafeteria. So if we could have a moment of silence for Mrs. Pelletier. Thank you. Our condolences to her family. Good. Introduction of members.
All right. Anita Leahy, Student Council President.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Venakow, Millville.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Jessica Morris, Secretary, Student Council.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Jack Keith, Blackstone.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
And welcome to Diane, and thank you for volunteering to join us and join the school committee. We appreciate your service and stepping up to do that for us. So, welcome. And I am so glad to have our student representatives back. So, you're on.
All right. So, prior to break, we had our annual pep rally and spirit week, which is always a big crowd pleaser for BMR. Our spirit days included days like tacky tourist day, Mathletes versus Athletes, and ugly sweater day. And we concluded our week with pep rally on the last day. It's always a favorite event, and the classes love going head to head with the games and spirit days, and lip syncs especially.
Also, since the last meeting, the winter sports season has begun, and both the indoor track team and boys varsity and girls varsity basketball teams have had quite a few meets and games with a few losses, but also some exciting victories. In the last month, the girls and boys track team have set 13 personal records for the team, which is awesome. And the girls relay team is one second away from beating the school's record.
Ooh.
Which was made in 2015, which was broken last. Student council members have recently teamed up with athletics to be at the games to not only support our friends, but to also help out with tickets and concessions. Anita and I were there last night to help out at the game, and though the boys lost, it was a really intense and exciting last period. So that was exciting, too.
In the music department, we've also had nine students audition for our Central District Music Festival. Of these nine students that auditioned, six were accepted, and five were awarded with an all-state recommendation. So the Central District students will be performing this Saturday at Mechanics Hall, and the all-state recommendation students will be auditioning at Shrewsbury High School next Saturday. So we send them the best of luck.
Also with music, the jazz band will be performing at Stadium Theater for their annual Blackstone Valley Jazz Festival on February 1st. Mount St. Charles, North Smithfield High School, and when Sockit High School will also be there performing. So we hope to see many faces of the community there to support.
And then, lastly, NHS has started a blanket drive for the winter. We all know how cold it's been lately, contrary to today's oddly warm weather. But to help out those who are less fortunate in our community stay warm this winter, we've started a blanket drive that will be going until February 2nd, and all of our donations will be going to the Blackstone Food Pantry. So, we're very excited.
Where can we bring blankets if we wanted to participate?
All collections will be in the office of the high school or in, also in Mrs. McLean's room for students.
Are you ready?
And that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Have you received any acceptance letters for college?
I have heard back from three of my schools personally. American International College, Bridgewater State University, and Salve Regina University.
That's exciting. How about you, Jess?
Yeah, I've heard back from all my schools. I got into American International as well. Becker College, Curry College, Endicott College, and I was not accepted, but UMass Lowell.
Well, congratulations to you both, and best of luck in making that decision.
Thank you. Gonna need it.
Definitely good luck.
No stress.
Hey, it's a big step, but it's a great one.
Yeah.
So, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you at our next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to school committee. As those of you may be aware, two years ago, the school committee approved to work with MASC to revamp our policy manual as a whole, to look at old policies that were outdated, to remove policies that were in fact procedures for different schools, but not policies, and to look at the new state laws and be in compliance with anything that has happened since our policies were updated. So, the school committee members have received digital copies of the proposed policies. And the community, if you would like to look at the proposed new policy manual, it should be available to you on the BMRSD website to review. And in, at our next meeting, we will entertain a motion to approve that policy manual as a manual and discard any previous forms of the manual or policies that would exist. However, at this time, I'd like to entertain two amendments to those policies. And if anybody has any others, we could do that. But I'd like to entertain a motion that looks at policy BEDA, which is notification of school committee meetings. And in the last paragraph, the last sentence of that policy, it currently reads, "Notification of a change in a regular meeting time or place or agenda or notification, including agenda of a special meeting, will be filed with each town clerk at least 48 hours in advance as required by law." The Massachusetts law has changed and allows for posting on your school website, so I would like to delete the line "filed with each town clerk" and insert "posted on the BMRSD.net website." Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Tara?
Diane.
Oh, Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy. Is there any discussion? Just lets us post our meetings right on our website. So if somebody wants to find out if we're having a meeting, they just can go to our website. And that doesn't mean we won't post in libraries or town halls or wherever, but our reliance will be on our website.
And that's still 48 hours.
Yes. Correct. Okay? So that will be amended in what we vote on with the, amended in what people can review over the next few weeks, and it will, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So it will be amended in the policies that people can review, so when we vote on the manual as a whole, it will be as amended there. The other one I would like to entertain a motion is BDB, and that is the school committee officers' policy, where it says the duty of the officers. And under treasurer, we allow for an assistant treasurer who need not be a member of the committee, who shall in the absence of the treasurer, perform his or her duties and have the powers and be subject to requirements and penalties applicable to him and her. And that allows us to have, when, take some of the responsibility for collecting money and the duties of the treasurer. And there were members of the committee who thought it was important to do that under the secretary. So I would like to entertain a motion to insert under secretary, "The committee may appoint an assistant secretary who need not be a member of the committee and who shall in the absence of the secretary, perform his or her duties and shall have the powers and be subject to requirements and penalties applicable to him or her."
Still move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Diane, second by Jack. Discussion?
I believe there's a stipend to the treasurer. Is there going, or am I wrong?
There used to be.
I believe they're compensated.
I thought there was.
So are we going to compensate a secretary, and what line item will that be?
Well, the concern from the current secretary is that she doesn't do the things listed here, that it's done by Monique. So is there a compensation for Monique when she comes here to our?
She is paid an hourly rate.
Yeah, so she already is.
So what are, what responsibility are we giving her?
Well, it says, "Keep a permanent record book, in which all notes, orders, and proceedings of the committee should be recorded and comply with state law."
Which she already does.
Correct.
We're just catching up.
But it's supposed to be done by our secretary.
Well, the secretary, we signed it, yeah.
Yeah. You're signing that it will still be signed by?
Correct. Yep, yep.
I just want to clarify, because I don't do the listed duties there, other than sign.
And it's, and it really is just to officially recognize that Monique is here and does some things for us and has some responsibility for doing it.
Do we have, do other districts have that?
Some do, some do not.
Very different in many districts.
Yes. Not against the law to do it, not required to do it.
Yeah, I don't think I have an issue with that, but just maybe clarifying that there is no stipend, that it's, I guess, some wording around that, maybe? Or do you think it's necessary?
It just took the exact same wording that was in the assistant treasurer.
But I believe the treasurer gets a yearly, it's not an hourly amount.
Right.
So, I don't know if we want to.
Let me check and see.
But the assistant secretary is when?
Right.
I mean treasurer.
The assistant treasurer is when.
So she's already paid to do her duty.
She's getting a stipend.
Oh, she gets a stipend to do school committee work?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
When?
No, she does not get a stipend.
See, there used to be a stipend.
There used to be. So, we should verify that. It might have gotten rolled into the salary of our business manager.
Maybe.
But.
She does not receive a stipend because she is a certified business manager, which we didn't have for a while.
Oh, so when we didn't have that, then that person was getting paid. So is that not the same as Monique now that she has a position and she's getting paid an hourly wage through that position to do an extra little something at night?
Right.
So do we not have to talk about wages in that case?
We don't in our policy.
I guess it never used to be. I just figured that stipend was still in there.
We never talked about it going away, so.
I don't know. Any other discussion about adding this? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay. So I will make those. Anyone have any other amendments they would like to propose? Go ahead.
I would like, so, let's see, JJIBA.
JJIBA.
Has an R crossed out. So it's the championship jacket award section policy. And so, my question, I guess, or what I would, I don't, I think that this is an unnamed amount of money that we may have to spend in the future, that I don't know that we have to commit. So my question is, you know, should this be removed from policy? And then if any athletic team or band wins such a championship, that the fundraising go through those organizations? I mean, I think, you know, potentially, when this was created in 1988, we did not have a football team. So, you know, I just question, when we're so money tight, do we, do we have eight, potentially $8,000 to $10,000 at $200 a jacket for a, I don't know how many people on a football team say 40? So that, that's my question for discussion. I mean, I don't think anything else in here is monetary, except for this.
So, so would you, are you proposing we remove it?
I guess I would propose to remove it.
Is there any second to that?
A second.
Okay. And so, discussion. Erin.
I absolutely oppose removing that. We just purchased them for our band members two years in a row, and it wasn't anything that brought any of our accounts without preparing for it ahead of time into a negative Unfortunately, it's not as often as it could be for the kids. And I think that them knowing that it is something they get as that reward, they don't even know what's coming. They don't know, they don't read our policy manual. Parents already pay for them to participate in the activity. They already pay to get into the activity. They pay to send them on their field trips with the activity. They pay for the competitions that they do win, that earn the jacket, and I think it's a small part on our side. We've always taken it out of a school committee line when it is necessary, and I would hate to see that end. It's been, the varsity letters are always given and paid for by the athletic budget. For the kids not to have their jacket to put it on because they were champions that year would be a sad day at BMR.
Is the only way to get the jacket, to get?
No, I think Tammy's suggesting fundraising.
No, 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 I understand that. I'm just saying, so like teams who are not champions, do they buy themselves jackets?
Maybe by fundraising.
When they're varsity. I guess that's, when I was in high school, when you joined varsity, you bought your jacket. And then you earned your letters to put on it.
Right.
So my question was basically.
Does anyone do that?
Yes, do they do that in our district? When the kids join varsity, can they buy themselves a jacket? Or do they have to become champions to get jackets?
I've never seen anyone with.
The jackets are the same as the band, it would say BMR on it, it's the band jacket. So you have seen the jackets of the band jackets, and it would just have their sport.
Meaning like none of, like the varsity basketball team or the varsity baseball.
I've never seen them with them.
I've never seen any of the teams.
I'm surprised we don't have it in the school store.
Do we have a, do we have any other, do we have any, have we in recent years had any sports championships?
Where does everybody else do with their sweaters?
Yeah, track. Cross country, right?
Cross country, though we've done fairly well.
Cross country. Cross country.
Was it last year?
Nobody, but everybody who plays varsity earns a varsity letter.
Correct.
Correct. So people already have nothing to do with their varsity letters, if the only way to get a jacket is to become a champion.
Well, that's why I have my varsity letter from back in the 0800s, and it's just sitting in a drawer.
Right, right. No, I'm just trying to understand, I guess.
No, no, no.
I was the 1700s. I'm a little bit.
You know, and I get your point, I'm just thinking, maybe it's more appropriate to, instead of removing it, to maybe add some wording to say pending funding, or, you know. The funding will be there. I don't think we're gonna shortchange the kids on that, but we could always put in some wording around, you know.
As long as it doesn't break the bank.
And they don't get a new one every, you know, if they've already had one.
Once somebody gets one, they just get a patch. Yeah, correct.
And not that I was old enough to remember, but in 1988, that policy probably went in right after the band returned from their Rose Bowl parade. Because that was when they, was the 30th anniversary of the band going to the Rose Bowl.
If you go into our gym, you'll see many years that, for baseball and basketball, it just hasn't been recent enough for.
For our memory.
Right, 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 yeah.
For our kids, or even parents in the, in towns. But there were many years in ballroom gym with the banners. And those kids still have their jackets.
Sure.
And they show them to their kids. So.
But I think part of that is to Tammy's point, that if we ever had those years where that was proliferated.
We would be very loud and proud.
Yeah, we would be.
We would be very loud and proud, and I think there would be no one at this table that would vote against paying for those jackets.
Am I not wrong in that some band members are owed jackets as of today?
You are 100% correct.
Okay, I remember hearing that rumor, so I guess that's to my point.
They do not have their jackets from last year.
We're already owing someone jackets.
And that's our fault. We approved that as a committee, and whether we should have followed it through, or why that didn't happen, but it's not, it wasn't the kids' fault, it wasn't the band's fault. They came to us, we told them we were awarding them jackets, and it never, it never, never happened. And honestly, I don't know why still till now, this January, it hasn't, because it was a discussion last October, maybe, Alan?
Yeah, because we were surprised that it had not.
I believe in October, the order was placed?
Oh, was it?
I believe the, there was a problem with the original order not going through.
But was it corrected in October?
It should have been.
This October?
Right. I think that's when, Erin, you brought it up.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, because I wasn't sure which year we're talking about.
That's a whole year later, because I mean, the band is done in the fall.
Well, we would have seen them in January. They, we probably saw them last, this meeting last year.
Right.
Right, so after.
As they're, when they were champions, we approved it. It should have been purchased by July 1st, in last year's budget, off of the school committee line item.
Yeah. Let me find out where that is.
So I, so I guess my question.
It wasn't a money, it wasn't a, we didn't have the money.
Okay, so that's my question.
It was.
It just was an oversight.
Someone didn't know where that money was supposed to come from.
Okay.
And it, and.
With that in mind, you know, my thought is with that in mind, if, you know, the football team continues to get better and better, if we have to do that, that will be a big line item that first year. And if we didn't have the money for the probably smaller amount of band members that don't have a jacket from previous years, then I would be concerned that we would.
Financially.
We would be letting 45 kids down at once, and that obviously would not be, I mean, I guess it's a vote, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of removing JJIBA from our policy manual, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I change, can I ask that question? Sorry, I should have said it while you asked for discussion.
Sure.
Can we amend it to put a budget, like financially pending?
Mike, my, to appropriation, but my, I mean, that's like the state. What do we say when the state does that to every, us every year with the buck?
It's gonna be a no.
And what if the, you know, band wins one year and we have it, because it's 15 people, and so we have it, and then the football team wins the next year and it's 45 people, and we go, oh, you're too many. That to me, that's worse.
Or is there, you know, we pay half of a, like, we put a percentage.
I think you get dicier when you, when you do that, because things.
Correct. We do what's been done to us that we don't like.
Seasons end in different.
Yep.
Seasons, yeah, so the spring people, there's no money left.
We essentially either have to decide if it's a tradition that we want to choose to continue to honor as a school committee, as part of the school budget, or if it's a tradition we want to continue to choose to honor with the organization that wins, finding a way to provide that. I think those are the, essentially.
So I have one more thing to say. This is something that directly affects the kids, guys, and this is not something that we have to fund every year. And it's a simple policy that we have, that I bet you no one has ever read. And I will be beside myself if this is missing from, for the kids of the future, for the kids of today. This is, this is something that we don't need to take away from them. It's not something that's costing us money every year, that we're fighting with the towns about. It is, it is an award for something that they have put their heart and soul into, regardless of what sport or what band season it was. When they get that jacket, it was deserved. We're not just handing them out to every kid that signs up and pays their user fee. And I think shame on us for, for trying to take something away that they have to earn.
And I will say, the only reason I bring it up is the only, in all of the.
Policies.
Policy we went through, this is the only, only policy that has a direct budget impact, depending on what it is, is how much it is, and that's why I brought it up. I wasn't sure that it is really a policy versus a choice that we could make as a committee when that, you know, championship arrives in town. So, that was, that was more to my point. I would love to see everybody with band, with championship jackets for different things, but I don't know, in these tight budget, if we can come up with $10,000 if we needed it on the fly.
And I think it's good to know that we only have one policy that would be a monetary effect on us, that versus, for as big as that binder is, there's only one that's gonna cost us money that might happen.
That is, that, you know, that's not, that, you know.
Things cost us money, but not direct.
Right. Not a, not like a line.
Do we have an idea of how much it costs per year? If we're actually.
It's not per year.
It's not per year, it's per championship.
Okay.
We're at zero this year.
When they win.
That's a very valid answer.
So far.
Because it depends on how many kids don't have a jacket. For band, it's typically, you're there for four to six years. You've already gotten your jacket, you're getting a patch. I think it was 25 jackets last year.
Which rounds out to about, what?
I mean, I looked at.
I think it was around $4,800.
Okay, I was gonna say, when I looked, the prices seemed to go from 200 to the very deluxe model of $450 or so, which I don't know what kind of leather those had, but.
That's our corduroy. Corduroy with yellow embroidered.
So again, I just.
All right. Well, the motion is on the floor. There's a motion to remove JJIBA from the policy manual. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Nay.
No, nay. Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Abstentions, I'm gonna abstain.
I'm abstaining.
You two?
Yep.
Okay, two abstentions. The rest, nay. So we will not make the change to that policy.
Nope.
Any others? Okay. Just so people know, then, we will make the two changes that were amended today. The policy manual will be available for review digitally, and then at our next official meeting, we will, we will bring this up again and vote to approve the manual as written with the amendments today, and remove any previous versions or policies that existed before the official time next week. From that point on, then we will sign a contract with MASC to host our policy manual, and so if somebody goes to the BMR website and wants to look at the policy, it will link them to the MASC website, and we will be there with about 69 other institutions, and they just go to the policy they want, and it will pop right up, and there will be one official printed copy kept in the administrative offices. Yes?
How, do they recommend how often we have to review those, once we are done?
Well, we, we, in about two meetings ago, appointed a policy review committee. It is Tammy, Tara, and Sarah, and so they will, as a committee, continue to work with MASC to look for any laws that have passed, or if somebody comes and proposes a policy to the manual, and they're going to continue to go through and look and tweak, and we will continue to have a policy review committee and hopefully not let this fall by the wayside. But we get updates annually from MASC with any laws that have changed, that we need to change, so. And they will automatically do some of those for us. They'll, they'll notify us that we need to, to make the motion, but they'll automatically make the changes for us as we change them, for as the laws change. Any other questions about that? Okay. Public forum? Consent Agenda A, motion to move consent Agenda A with the warrants, field trips, and minutes of the December 14th meeting? Moved by Jack, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Karen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Well, I think I need to abstain from the minutes.
Yes. All those opposed? And abstentions? Diane. We do need to make a few amendments to our student handbook, and I believe that you have that in your packet. Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reggio. As everyone knows, we have our coordinated program review this year from the Department of Education, and, excuse me, and some of the changes that we need to make are simply around updating our language to conform to the current modern day around special ed, civil rights, and English language learners. And there are two specific, excuse me, changes in the handbooks that are for the committee's consideration to align them with what is acceptable for our review. The first one is around the nondiscrimination clause. That is the footnote of every school district. And we just needed to add, sorry, what you see in the new language underlined. And that becomes what the Department of Ed would expect that we have. We have had one meeting with the Department of Ed and they gave us some of the guidelines that they would like us to see. So we do not have to have that as a finding when they do come for their site visit. So the first one is the nondiscrimination statement, just to add where those additional words are underlined. And the second one is to capture the updated addition to the bullying law. If you remember back in 2009 and 10, the initial bullying law was student focused only. And it was then added in 2012 to include staff as well. And so this brings it up to compliance with the current laws of the Commonwealth. So again, you can see the underlying part is what we would propose to be added to all of our handbooks. And I ask for the committee's consideration on approving both of those.
And just so everyone knows, these are now consistent with what we have in our, or proposed in our policy manual. It's been updated there as well.
Does Dr. Laporte, is she the person for every handbook or just, is this the middle school version?
No, this would be proposed for all handbooks. Elementary, middle, and yes. But Dr. Laporte has, is the coordinator for 504 for Title II and VI. So she has graciously added this for our, in one place, I guess, basically. But it would be for every handbook, elementary, middle, and high school.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the new language for nondiscrimination and the new language for the bullying policy.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tara, seconded by Diane. Any other further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Abstention? Okay, so, so changed.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item I have is just a brief update on our current FY19 budget discussions. And we, we hosted a meeting that was open to the community last evening and was gratifying to see both town administrators, many selectmen, and finance committee members, along with some leadership team, as well as some teachers and parents there. So it was really the first opportunity for folks to see the proposed budget. And we have, had included what is in your packet, sorry. And so this, as we continue, it is as early as we have done this, but it gives everybody, excuse me, an opportunity to review that.
Alan, I opened it, but not, did not drink from it.
You can't have it back then.
That's okay. I'd rather share my water than...
Sorry.
I'll talk, you can drink for a minute.
So that's where we are and it's great to have the information out this early.
And I wanted to respond to some individuals who asked some questions at that meeting and said that they were surprised to see a much higher number than they saw on our November 9th meeting. And I want to remind them, if they had attended our November 9th meeting, watched the video from our November 9th or read our minutes, that we were very clear that that strategic report was a preliminary base budget, just taking the base of our finances and saying if they continue to increase at the rate they've been increasing in the past, without doing anything else, this is what it would look like. And then we had narrative saying, but we want to add additional things like an assistant superintendent, some curriculum, we had other numbers in there. And at that time, Miss, and it's in the minutes, Mrs. Vinoco warned that she was very concerned that if we didn't have all our numbers in one place, that people would have a negative reaction to that. And Mrs. Lemieux warned that if the numbers that are associated with this document are the only numbers that stand, that narrative would, the narrative would encourage people to be frustrated. And Mr. Himmelberger in the minutes indicated that this is a work in progress. The numbers would be added when presented to the towns, when we, he had an opportunity and we had an opportunity to meet with the leadership team and based on the needs. And that that was just a working start. And we are still in a work in progress. Even though last night's figures show an 8.4% increase in a needs-based budget, we as a committee know that we will not end up with an 8.4% increase request. And that I am hopeful that both the towns and community members who have questions and the school committee will continue to work on this. And we'll talk and we'll, we'll listen to each other. And we will come up with a budget that meets the needs of our school, meets the abilities of our towns. But we have to work together on this and not just be frustrated with each other and throw the baby out with the bathwater. This is a work in progress and we need to continue working. Does anybody else have any other comments about budget or last night or?
It was actually better attended than some years.
I was pleased.
So that was, that was pleasant?
Yeah.
I could not have said it better myself if I could have said it.
And it really was the first time we saw that new number too.
Correct.
The last meeting we had was with leadership where they presented all these needs that they have. So we were the first time, you know, we had also seen it. And like you said, we all know at this table that 8.4 is not happening. We are not going to actually be able to bring that number somewhere, but...
But we will also...
Other than the 3.1 that was in the strategic plan.
But we will also take some of those needs and put them into a year two and year three. And we'll continue to tweak that strategic plan so that when we have our public hearing, when we get to that point, or we go to the town meetings, we have a plan that shows how these needs have to fit into the future. There may be other needs that will come up. There'll be other facility needs that will come up. And it's a flexible, it's never going to be, we need $25 and we need it and that's all we'll ever need.
And that was said last night. It was, you know, we saw this number, that's what we looked at. And it's like, but we won't get that number. So next year, the number won't be right either because we still are trying to make up the needs in addition to adding.
Correct.
So these numbers are always, having a three-year plan is actually very difficult.
Yeah.
Because they're going to count on that number and be mad when it's not that number.
So we're a work in progress and we are hopeful that people will work with us.
I think it's just important too that, you know, what I, what I feel like sometimes is people who are not involved in the educational process as we are, look at, only look at the number. And I think the reason that we become so passionate about not just looking at a number is that we know that when, when it says reading specialist, that means that somebody is not, some kid, some child who has difficulty with reading is not getting the level of intervention that research-based show should be. He or she is in a class of 25 instead of 5 to 10. And that was a budget cut last year, but Johnny in that classroom, it's being impacted today. And it's not just a number. This is services and educational experiences that kids aren't getting year after year. And eventually, when they, over time, it has a bigger impact. And then, and then the same people want to look at MCAS scores or this score or this score, but you didn't fund what they needed for five years. So how can you expect that number to go up when this number didn't go up? And not that every educational opportunity has a dollar sign to it, but unfortunately, many do.
Many do.
So I think I just implore people not to just focus on that bottom line, but to ask what difference does that reading specialist make? Or what difference is that tech support going to make? Because then you find value in it and it's not just a hindrance on budget.
Well said. Good point.
Okay, my final comment would be on the update of our buildings. And I just wanted to let everyone know that the John F. Kennedy project is moving forward into the next phase. The next step is for a special town meeting vote on Wednesday, the 24th of January, at the high school auditorium at 7:00 to approve $75,000 for the amount for the schematic design to come up with the numbers for that project. This past Monday, I went to the finance committee's public hearing on, for town meeting on the articles. And I cautioned the finance committee that while this project is long overdue and, and we are excited about replacing the boilers and the windows, we also have a long list of other things at Kennedy that must be addressed and, and should be addressed simultaneously that are not part of MSBA. We also will reapply for both Millville Elementary and for Maloney for the updated, much-needed renovations and updates for those schools. And certainly, the most expensive, complicated project is for the high school. And we were very disappointed that we did not make the list of approved projects this year. So that project must be resubmitted by April of this spring. And we will do that for both, for all three of those projects. These are addressed in the strategic and financial plan, the building infrastructures. We, just this past Sunday, had no heat at the Kennedy and Maloney schools. The previous weekend, over the, again, the cold that we experienced over New Year's weekend, we had no heat in Millville. So we, we are more fortunate than the districts that have broken water pipes and, and had to close school for other reasons. But it is still an expensive way to maintain our plant operations. So I will continue to, to work as hard as I can, both with MSBA and with the towns, to get these on as capital items, to make sure that we have that, again, included in the rolling three-year plan. And that's all I have.
What was the heat issue in Millville?
One of the boilers was not getting the voltage from one of the transformers. And so it was, was fixable and we were happy about that and as was JFK.
School committee forum. I will again thank everyone who came to our meeting last night. I hope we get that kind of response when we have our public hearing or any other meetings. And I hope we are invited to town finance committee meetings to continue that discussion with finance committees as well. This Saturday, I will be joining the VMMA, I hope I said that right, volunteering at the Patriots playoff game, woo-hoo! Even though I'll be working, I'll still be there. So I'm very excited to that, but I think they need volunteers more. Yes. We still need some more volunteers. So if anybody has a Saturday afternoon, evening, morning, Sunday morning that they would like to...
I'm signing Jack up now too.
All right. Okay. We're going to be flipping sausage. We actually don't know what booth we have, but we're going to be...
It's always, it's generally the...
It's usually sausage.
It's always sausages.
It's always sausage.
Sausages.
Unless they're never really low and then they throw you in different booths.
We won't be low. We're going to get volunteers if anybody would like to. Please, join us.
Better.
Erin?
I just wanted to mention that we did co-op ice hockey with Bellingham. You can check the schedule on MIAA to find out when the upcoming games are. We have four players. They are doing okay. It's a very young team.
It's first year.
They're struggling. Well, the Bellinghams had a team, it's not their first year, but it's the first year with our co-op. But the boys are having fun, so that's all that matters. They are, yes. Actually, our freshman is their starting goalie, so pretty nice.
Go Cameron.
Yes, go Cameron. Anita's brother.
Anita did not mention that, but that's okay. Brotherly love.
I'm all set today.
Diane, welcome.
I guess just to encourage people to come out to the January 24th town meeting in Blackstone to approve the, is it just 75,000? Is that the only thing on the warrant?
I believe there might be one other item.
Amendments, maybe?
Yes, there is one other article on the special town meeting.
Come out and do your civic duty.
Yeah.
Civic duty, exactly. Sarah?
Nothing today.
Karen?
Nothing today.
Okay, well, our next meeting was scheduled for January 25th. Unfortunately, we have to move that. Our preliminary search committee is hard at work and they need that date. So, I don't know. Any suggestions? The 23rd, move it to the Tuesday?
Would that work for you? I don't even know.
And Tuesday, January 23rd? Does that work for you? You? Karen? Well, that's a bad week for you. It's always a bad week for you.
Well, I, yeah.
Well, we'll...
Gets me out of hockey carpool, I'm in.
All right. I'll double-check with everyone. If you have a problem, just let me know so we can make sure we have a quorum. But otherwise, we'll move to January 23rd. All right. And anything else? Hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Diane, seconded by Tara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Tammy, thank you for the...